The President of the United States of America, and the District Republic of British Kansas, one nation under God, with the resolve of liberty and justice for all.
Is there any recording meeting for the public? We'll call Mr. Hirsch.
Mrs. Lorenzo.
Here.
Mr. Hershey.
Here.
Mrs. Kim.
Here.
Mrs. Phillips.
Here.
Mrs. Rodriguez. Mr. Schippers.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Torres.
Here.
Mrs. Savinski.
Here.
Any comments?
Thank you. I see no visitors. Upcoming meeting dates, March 13th this Wednesday at Curriculum Workshop here at 4:30. March 18th, School Directors Meeting here. March 19th at 5:30, a Finance and Facilities Workshop. And an executive session will be held following tonight's meeting for a legal matter. Is there any public comment? Board Liaison Updates, Curriculum, Mrs. Kim.
I don't have anything other than we're doing the CLCL's workshop on Wednesday at 4:30.
Great. Facilities, Mrs. Phillips.
Thank you. On February 28th, the board was given a tour of the flame refilled facility as well as both the baseball and softball fields. That was to get us ready for the facilities workshop that we had afterwards where Mike presented the board, the Phase Two Presentation with Brian Bingham from Turf Track and Court. I know this is just the beginning of everything, so there's a lot to discuss. So the presentation can be found in the district's website under the Department's tab, because I know some people already asked where is it located. It's in the Facilities section under Safety and Security, under the Facilities Workshop. We do have another workshop coming up this month, that is March 19th, and that will be held at 5:30 here in the boardroom.
Thank you. Finance, Mr. Schippers.
Yes, at the last Finance Committee meeting, we had a presentation from our associate from Herbin, an associate, to give us a review of our audit. Notably, it was a clean bill of health, thanks to all the great staff here. We also talked about, there is a revised standards, new regulations from the federal government on meal program that would actually reduce, basically allow us to provide a meal to every student, but in doing the analysis which Mr. Boyer has done, we would have to do 23,000 meals to make it worth our while. We could only do a max of 15,000 meals, so it would actually cost us about $200,000 a year to follow through with the program, so we've decided to decline that. And then finally, we went through resignations, retirements, cash flow needs, and just overall 24, 25 budget.
Thank you. Policies, Mrs. Kim.
Thank you. We're going to be in upcoming meetings talking about some updated policies, most of which are recommended by PSBA, who kind of funnels information from the government down to each individual school district. Nothing majorly earth-shattering, just some minor changes. I believe they're being presented for first read next, or on the 18th?
Yeah.
So we won't vote on them on the 18th. We'll read them. You'll have an opportunity for a second read, and then at that point, we vote on whether or not we want to adopt the policy changes.
Thank you. Mr. Boyer has advised me that I went too quickly and once again just passed over approval of the minutes, so we're going to go back to number three, which is routine approval of the minutes. And it's recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following minutes of February 12th, 2024, committee of the whole meeting minutes. Is there... I think that's a motion, so then I think what I need is a second. And any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. And we will proceed to the Mental Health Action Plan update by Dr. Lynn.
Hello, everybody. Good afternoon. I was here last in October, which some of our newer board members will not appear for that presentation, so I'm going to try not to duplicate everything, but there will be a few things that some of you will already have heard, but I want to make sure that we know the sequence of how we've been moving through our action plan. So just as a little background, the strategic plan really initiated all of our work related to mental health and behavioral health. In 22, 23, we as a task force and community identified our needs. In 23, 24, we are beginning our work, and by next year, we hope to have full implementation of this current action plan, but will likely be building upon it as we move forward. So it's not as though all of our mental health and behavioral health initiatives stop next year. In the 22, 23 year, we had multiple task force meetings, and then we had a lot of opportunity for individual and group input as well. In March of 2023 is when this action plan, which you're going to see on the next slide, really was put together and started, and the work started almost immediately on it. And then most recently, in February of this year, we had another task force meeting, and we have another one planned for June of this year. So following the June task force meeting at some point, either in the beginning of next school year or late in the summer, you'll probably see me again with a whole lot more updates, because we have a lot more data coming our way, probably in May, which is why we chose a June date. And then finally, while I am leading a lot of these goals, we have a whole lot of other people that are on this team working to create more opportunities for our students. So who is included? Mrs. Taylor serves as our board representative. We have a number of administrators, school counselors, our school social worker, our student assistance specialist, nurses, parents, teachers, support staff, and then we have a number of local physicians who have been communicating with us, and then multiple community agencies. So it really is a community effort as opposed to just a wide-missing area school district effort. So then for those of you that don't know and haven't seen this in detail, we, our group actually developed seven areas that we wanted to focus on. So our first area of focus is the stigma of mental health. And so then underneath each area, you'll see a few different action steps. And then on the very right-hand side of this, you will see our progress. This, this actual document is not on our website right now, right now, but one that's on there was updated as of October, the last time I was here. So after tonight's presentation, we will get this new one up there, and it will be on our website for everybody to see. So that very first action step is developing a K-12 menu for in-class mental health breaks, brain breaks, there's lots of different names for them. And we are making some progress towards that. We have the My Time Yoga that our K-1 and 2 teachers are already trained in, and then that is being expanded to third and fourth, and our specialists as late as next year. So by next year, we would have those folks trained. We have somebody at West Reading who has taken a real interest in this and is working. She provided a mini PD session in our Friday mini-conference in service day. So we're starting to see it moving up, and we are working with some of our junior, senior high school staff to talk about what will that look like in a 7 through 12 environment. The next is, this is one we've talked about a lot, mostly because it was one of my highest interests. We did organize the Community Wide Health Campaign, those are the kindness signs. We saw that slow down with the winter months, which we expected. We're hoping to do some more advertising coming up as people are out gardening and getting their yard set up. Between both myself and the library, we'll be doing that. And then that last one there is creating opportunities in the K-4 building to normalize mental health services and supports. We want to normalize mental health services and supports K-12, but we thought we would start with our youngest learners and where kiddos are often entering us, and then we're going to move it up. I discussed all of that at our last meeting, what we are doing, they really made some great strides to have the ESAP program better advertised. The second area of focus is parental knowledge of age-appropriate behaviors. So this is where I'm going to start to kind of highlight just some of what's happening rather than reviewing everything. So that first one, our COPE Center, parent virtual trainings that we have, Dr. Woodard's really been leading that, those initiatives. The January, yeah, the January 2024 one, Understanding Video Game Addiction, that was the first one, and you'll see that come up a couple times, where we actually held it in person, we provided dinner to our families, and we provided babysitting to our families. I was there with a number of resources set up for tangible items for families to take, as well as St. Luke's. Our attendance was not quite as high as we would have liked, but the folks that were there really appreciated it and really said that their intent is to go spread the word. So we felt like that was really productive. The other thing to really note on this one is February was Parenting Through Anxiety and Depression, which shows up later on our action plan. That was an area of need that really came from our task force and our data that we received from a parent survey probably two years ago now, and then our old PACE data. And we had our highest number of registered participants that we've seen since the beginning that we started, so last year when we started the COPE Center trainings. It was 76 were registered.
And just to piggyback as you're spreading the word, if you register and you can't attend live, you automatically get the, I guess webinar, or you get, you know, sent to you. You know, some of you know that because you've been doing it, but so we're encouraging a lot of parents as well, you know, you can't always make it that night, and everyone can have access to it, but then you're going to get it sent directly to your, to your email. So it's great to see the numbers moving forward. Thank you.
I think we were most really excited about it, that we even had some families that reached out and said, I had registered, I'm so sorry I wasn't there, and they, you know, really wanted to make sure that they had access to the recording. And then this is the only place on the action plan that I have future events, or future events written, so March, we have Establishing Healthy Boundaries, Boundaries coming up, and then April, we have Building Your Child's Confidence. The last thing you'll see there is for this year, we've had approximately 20 parents participating in our free parent coaching. That also has skyrocketed from last school year, so that's pretty exciting for us as well. For those of you that don't know about that, that is through the COPE Center, it is anonymous. They have you fill out a survey, a needs, an interest needs assessment, and then they pair you with a parenting coach. It is somebody that is accessible to you, not 24/7 necessarily, but they have scheduled meetings with you, and then also if there are moments of crisis or times that you need to speak about things that you're managing, they will sometimes make themselves available for additional times. The other thing that they really are doing that I think is benefiting our families is they're ensuring that they're matching you with someone who is appropriate to your needs. So if your family is dealing with maybe a divorce, they will pair you with somebody who has expertise in that area. That was another thing that was interesting with our families that came to the January session, some of them were participating and couldn't say enough about it. And then some of them that were participating, I found this interesting, mom was participating individually and dad was participating individually, so you can do that as well. Our partnership with COCA, this was to run this winter, and COCA has had some significant changes to staffing, and they have asked us to pump this to next year. So we are still on their books to host this. This is the Strengthening Families Program, which our intent was to host it at West Reading and to have it paired with some significant incentives and meals for families and students to attend. Our Teens and Technology Program meeting, that's empty, and again, I didn't want to put future things on here, because once this goes on the website tonight, it will be a snapshot as of right now, but those are also, those are already scheduled. So our fifth through eighth grade students will receive the Teens and Technology Program training the week of March 18th, which is next week, and then March 20th, which is next Wednesday, we have our parents in grades K to 8 are invited for what's called Kids and Technology. It talks a little bit about the addiction of technology, but it also really is kind of some helpful tricks and tips for parents who, many of our kids are smarter than us with technology, so it's learning some of those apps where they're hiding things, learning some of those apps which you can't filter. And that was also a board recommendation. Initially, our group was looking at only providing it for 5 through 8, and after some discussion here, some of our previous board members felt that taking that down as low as kindergarten, because we're seeing more and more kids with devices. Increasing our social media use to advertise parent offerings and considering ways to incentivize. We're making some slogans here, we did, I already talked about the most recent virtual training where we offered the babysitting and the dinner, and then Spartan Sprouts, we are using that to also advertise parent coaching and our mental health series. Our third area of focus is bullying and depression and suicide. So the very first one is expanding our advertisements. Our school counselors all have in every single email that they send, and whenever they have an outgoing message, meaning if they're on vacation, if it's the summertime, any email that comes from them or goes to them and they're not available will pick back the crisis numbers. Our junior, senior high school Avidum Club is advertising the hotlines very well throughout our 7 through 12 building. And just Friday, I received a package from the 988 Suicide Prevention through STAMSHUB, I always say that wrong, but that's the acronym for it, that shows us, or that allows us some materials to put in our younger buildings as well. Our Youth Mediation Program and HOPE Squad, our HOPE Squad has increased really significantly. They were at about 30 students last year, that's ninth through 12th grade, and we're at 46 this year. And they developed a HOPE Council, which is new this year, and that's really to provide some additional leadership opportunity. We were seeing that some kids were kind of showing up for meetings, but not necessarily carrying that out. Our HOPE Squad is to carry out the message related to suicide prevention and know the signs and symptoms of what they should be looking for in their peers. And with this Leadership Council, we have seen some, some of our students really step up. Our Flight Team Membership, we have all of our school counselors at this point trained, and then we have a few other folks in the two buildings trained. They did not offer another prepare training this spring, so if next spring comes around, we would open that up. And Flight Team Training is when there is some type of traumatic event within the county. For example, if a school district were to have a student pass away in a car accident. The IU coordinates those efforts, they reach out to all school districts, so I would get an email, even if it was, you know, 3:00 PM on a Sunday that says the Hamburg School District is in need of additional supports, and then we, our trained team members can descend upon that school and help. Thankfully, we have not had to use that, but we have everything in place if, if that need arose. Annually reviewing our Crisis Intervention Support and Post- intervention manual that I already talked about last year, we will do that again this year, come back to it as an admin and school counseling department, just to make sure that there's no more best practice changes to that. And then providing evidence-based suicide prevention training to school staff. Again, I don't have anything there, but in a few more slides, I'm going to talk a little bit more about what's happening with that. Nothing is happening today, which is why that's blank. Our fourth area of focus is stress and pressure. I already talked about the first one, which was that Parenting Through Anxiety Virtual Training, and the reporting again is on the website. I'm not sure if we said that. Mr. Spore said if you register, you do get the email that tells you, here's the reporting, but we also have them all on our website for families to access. Identifying at-risk youth through universal mental health screenings. This is something that we are putting a whole lot of time and effort into, so there's two different methods that will be coming, and I will talk about them again a little bit further down. They are things that take a lot of heavy work before you can actually implement, and then once you're ready to implement, you can kind of sit back and you have everything in place, but there's a lot that has to go into the planning. The next one, the only update related to continuing our look at our K-12 SCL curriculum and what we're teaching through our school counselors and through others in other classes is, starting this winter, our school counselors and our, our health and PE departments are really reviewing what they have and basing it on the recommendations from Dr. Aris. So we already have a lot in place, and I think what we're already seeing with just having started this work is, what we need to do is make sure that we're spiraling back to some of those skills as opposed to we're completely missing skills. Again, we've talked about this, but the example I always come back to is sleep. What sleep looks like for a third grader and the importance of it is very different than it is for an 11th grader. And so if we're hitting that in the elementary grade, we can't just check it off, we have to make sure that we're coming back to it and talking about it with age-appropriate language and age-appropriate needs. Our fifth area of focus is a lack of access to mental health providers and services. This one, if I'm being very honest, is where I'm most excited about. So we did reorganize our social work services, 7 through 12, and actually K-12. So we have a, Mrs. LaScala, who is from the Center for Mental Health through Tower Health, has become full-time at our junior, senior high school. So five days a week, start of school until the end of school, she is here. What we did was we moved a position from the junior, senior high school emotional support classroom to do that same job, K-6. That employee is actually in her social work certification program, so it's really exciting because we're getting, you know, as she's learning and going through her coursework, we are getting the most recent of best practices related to social work. Both positions were very welcomed, everyone is thrilled, there has really been no negatives to that move. We talked about the district homeless liaison responsibilities, that all came to me, that was within our junior, senior high school, school counseling department. It is time-consuming, and so it has opened up that school counselor to have more time to do those duties. And then as a little plug, next Monday, actually, you're going to hear me talk about the audit that occurred related to students with homelessness. This is the big one. So if you all recall, we started school-based counseling at the end of the 22, 20, no, the end of the 21, 22 school year. 22, 23, we had it, and now 23, 24, we have it. If you look at where it says, October of 2023, those were the numbers that I presented to you then, so 12 students were receiving counseling within the school setting at the Hills, six at West Reading, and 28 at the junior, senior high. February, so these are dates as of about two weeks ago. We have 22 at the Hills, 13 at West Reading, and 46 at the junior, senior high school.
So that's Feb. 24.
Oh, yes. You're correct. I'm sorry. Yep. So that is as of really about two weeks ago. And March, we just got an email, I want to say it was March 1st, actually, that they are adding a third school-based counselor to provide support to.
Just want to comment, I mean, I kind of came through the pupil services area, and you know, in the past, we could always refer parents to announce that agency, and they felt permission, and you know, we'd get them set up, and some parents were able to do that, were willing to do that. And unfortunately, a lot of families, just for whatever reason, couldn't do that, whether it was, there was something in the way, you know, scheduling, transportation, you know, access, and so when this came in, these numbers were zero, I think as of about two years ago, to see, you know, these are families now that can access the support right here. Many other families still access supports outside, and you know, we encourage that as well. So you know, there's a lot of other students getting supports, but here's a group that, you know, we believe many wouldn't be getting these services. They're getting regular therapy, you know, weekly or beyond, so thank you to the team to see it kind of grow from where it was a couple years ago.
What's really notable about these numbers is if my child was referred for school-based counseling and they started in the program and was being pulled, you know, every Wednesday, and I said, I don't want him being pulled out of class, he needs to be in class, this is causing him more stress, more anxiety. Empowerment is allowing those students to still be on their caseload and go to the office. So if I'm willing to take my child there in the evening and not have them miss school, and those students are not included in those numbers. So those are just kids that are being seen within our core walls.
And, sorry, don't know the increase from October to February. Do you have any sense, is that because kids' needs are becoming that much more acute, or is the word just getting out?
I think, I think all of the above. We typically see a spike in student need in November, December related to holidays, but no, I think word is out, and we're not having resistance of kids going to see them. I think, again, talking about stigma of it, we just have so many kids going to different places within the building that I think it's being questioned so much less by students and their peers.
And where do they meet with the resources? Within the guidance counselor suite, or do you just have to kind of find a spot?
So we kind of have to find a spot. Although it is consistent, it's not, you know, she's not moving every 20 minutes somewhere. So if it's a Monday, Katie's here, she's going to one spot and staying there. But we are, we try to be as consistent as possible with it, in that suite or in the, across the hall, where the other administrators are. Which is also where our Karen groups run, and sometimes these kids overlap, they're just very familiar with the spaces, and again, they're just not seeing the resistance that I think some of us anticipated early.
And how do they, how do they get referred? Like, is it all sources, or how do kids get into this program?
All sources. So it can come from a SAP referral, it can come from a SAP assessment, so you meet with our Karen rep to be assessed, and the outcome could be outpatient therapy. It can be a parent referral, it can be a school counselor referral. Sometimes it is simply that Johnny is struggling, and he goes into his school counselor, and he says what he's struggling at, and he says, I'm not going to counseling anymore, and it comes out that he's not going to counseling anymore because he didn't have a ride, or the insurance was no longer accepted. So those kids, almost immediately, we put the referral through. I've put referrals through personally in my role here, so anybody can do it.
What are the capacity constraints, and are we near that level, or are we in pretty good shape?
So I'm a little scared to ask that question at the moment. I have a meeting with them, I think it's next Wednesday, to discuss where we're at currently and where we're going. They, I believe, are only working with Wilson and Wyomissing right now, and I believe some of their services with Wilson have decreased a little bit because of some other programs at Wilson, right? So I've never had to say to them, we need somebody new, they've not delayed anything, we've not been on a waitlist, not once. I just get an email, and she says, we're not going on a waitlist, we have you another provider, so.
That's amazing. For school-based counseling.
Yeah, they just, I can't say enough about the agency, the director, all of our counselors that have come through, we've really had.
And just to clarify, I know there's another service at Empowerment, but this level of service, we don't pay for.
Correct.
We don't pay anything, it's either insurance, or we refer the students to get insurance or get insurance support if they don't have it.
Yeah.
The nice part of here is they're not relying on us right now, but I think it's a fair question for Mr. Schippers, because that's a lot of growth, and everyone's having trouble staffing, no matter who's, you know, paying the bill, you know, so.
At least, I'm trying to think, it's going to be my question, because what I'm finding out from other parents and what I'm hearing is, going outside, the wait time is so long for these kids to get help. So if these numbers continue to go up, like what could happen?
So you're not allowed at this point to have, when you bring in school-based counseling, or for example, Mrs. LaScala, who is Center for Mental Health, that has to be approved by the county. I don't really know all of that, I mean, I did the application process. I don't know what happens on the backend to know if we could potentially be approved for another provider. I don't know if Empowerment would stay with us if we said we were going to go with another provider as well. I think those would just have to be conversations, and certainly, my upcoming meeting to discuss moving into next year, I'm certain that this would be on the agenda, whether I bring it up or not, I'm sure that she's also thinking that, so that's something I can bring back to you all.
Are the students, do they have meetings every week, or is that every other week, or?
Depends on how long do they meet with? So it's just like typical counseling where they develop treatment goals, and for one student, that may be that they're meeting weekly, for another, it may be bi-weekly, for another, it might be monthly, and it might lessen as the student gets closer to meeting their treatment goal. The treatment goals are not, not specific to the school setting necessarily, some of them might be, but they're not all.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry, one more thing. Do any students get referred but turned away from Empower because they don't have, they don't have coverage?
So we have, knock on wood, not had that happen yet, and here's why. Our school social worker and our student assistance specialist will help families apply for medical assistance. We have not had any yet, again, knock on wood, that we've run into an issue with, that is also, that could end up being a challenge for us at some point, too. Thankfully, Empowerment has one of their staff members who's with us that accepts medical assistance, only some therapists can. Again, I don't understand all of what happens behind the scenes with that, but they, again, have been just so flexible with us. If that therapist is only seeing kids at the junior, senior high, but now we have an elementary student who is an MA kiddo, they will allow her to go down there and service that child. All right, the next one, it's blank, but it is something super exciting. We are sort of, I make notes on my presentation, I don't even look at it, this is, you have to. We are looking at different options of how to do this, and the purpose of this would be that kids very easily know, although we know kids know this, who are their state who are their state people within the school building? Who is trained to really understand what needs they may be presenting? So we're looking at, if you've ever been in the junior, senior high school, a lot of the staff have nameplates outside that some of our classes have made on, I'm going to say a 3D printer, but I don't think it's a 3D printer, something where they're making these signs and they have some kind of icon that kind of represents the teacher. So we're looking at making nameplates that say, Mental Health Ambassador, that our staff K-12 could have hanging outside their classroom, hanging inside their classroom, wherever might be appropriate, depending on the level of the building. So we're looking right now to figure out funding for this. Is it a grant? Is it maybe a fundraising opportunity through our VETOM club? We're throwing out ideas, but we already have Mr. Miller up at the junior, senior high school on board with doing this. We just need to figure out how we can make it come to fruition. And mental health ambassadors would not just be the staff member who says, I'm really passionate about mental health and I want to help kids. It will be someone who has received some research-validated training related to mental health, which I'm going to talk about in a little bit. And then that last one is just continuing to gather regular input on student needs from families and students. We have the PAYS that we administered. If you recall, we also did the fourth grade pilot. We have the preliminary results from that. And one of the hiccups with that this year, and it's why we actually pulled the task force together in February, because I knew I'd have the preliminary results. They changed some of the questions, so they don't align to last year's preliminary results. So there was nothing for us to compare them to. However, they have, there's a monthly PAYS meeting, and at the last one, everyone was kind of up in arms about this. They claim that when our big report, which is like one hundred and twenty pages usually, it will compare to county averages and then state averages. So that's why our group is now going to come back together again in June. The sixth area of focus is bias and cultural factors. So the first one is creating visual artifacts to someday anti-bias and affirmation for all groups. We have participated in the Spread the Word campaign last year. Last year, it was just our junior, senior high school and just during lunch, just during one week. This year, we are doing it K-12, and we're pretty excited about that. Spread the Word is literally spreading the word inclusion, talking about how you're including others, why you're including others. We are also working with our VETOM club specifically to address some other artifacts within the school as well. The next one, I told you already that I have a meeting coming up with Empowerment. We are looking at planning some outside group options for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So those would be some more significant type groups than, by significant, I mean the topic. They're not topics that Johnny can leave second period at nine fifteen, go sit in a group and talk about for a half hour and just be expected to pop back into algebra like everything's great. So these would be opportunities for our kids to potentially go there, their evenings or their weekends, and do some of that really hard work where they're not expected to show back up in an academic class the following period. The next one, again, it's blank. It doesn't mean that there isn't work going on. It just means, actually, I'll talk about this a little later as well. We have a smaller subcommittee organizing to work on this work. There's a number of new state trainings as well. So Dr. Woodard and I have been talking about how we meet this need as well as the need that has come down from PDE of some additional required trainings. Our seventh and last area of focus is poverty. We have the Helping Harvest Weekender Program. I think I shared this last time, that we have about eighty-five students participating currently. We plan, I plan to apply for the summer program again. The summer program, we extend to students in summer school. We use, we allow our ESY students, so special education students, and then TIPS, which is at the Stonehouse. Those are some of our dumbest learners. We deliver bags there as well. We're also working, I'll talk about this a little later. I got on a youth advisory task force, I think it's called. Helping Harvest is organizing it, but it really is a lot of different community agencies and members. And so when I just got on it, they, if you've seen some of the work that Reading High is doing related to poverty, they're trying to expand some of that to some of these suburban schools as well. So I'm excited that I'm on that committee because I feel like I'm going to get advisory board, that's what it's called. I feel like I'm going to get the information first, so hopefully Wyman's can kind of jump on some of that as well. Increasing our advertisements of community supports. What we did this year in the beginning of the school year is we reached out to every single agency that we knew. And by we, it was myself, Lauren Johnson from Empowerment, Grace Patton, who is our student assistance specialist. And we just called and said, any pamphlets, flyers, pens, you know, nail files, any of those like free things that people like to pick up off tables, can we have some? And so we have really a collection of those materials. We set up at the Wyman's Hills for their parent-teacher conferences. We're always set up up here at the junior, senior high school. This year, it wasn't as organ, or wasn't as collective as what we did at the Hills. We had one table with everything. For the junior, senior high, we are looking to try to increase some of what we would have for next year as well. And then I shared at, when Dr. Woodard hosted the Cook Center, both myself and St. Luke's were there with everything out and presented. We've even gotten some creative things that you wouldn't necessarily think are, you know, what families would be looking for. But one of the things that got picked up at that parent night was a smoking cessation, cessation? Little like toque that Coca created. It has a lollipop in it, it has mint-flavored toothpicks, it has flyers on their, their trainings. And I actually had a family pick that up. She, the woman was just so appreciative of it. She said she had heard about it, but wasn't going to go through the effort to order it, but it was sitting there in front of her, and so she took it. So we are trying to, anytime we see things like that pop up, we're just going to try to have them here so that when the opportunity presents, we have it. ACEs trainings, we're looking at that for next school year. Again, that's going to overlap, we think, a lot with some of the mandates that are coming from PDE on required trainings. And then last but not least, advertising our free reduced lunch options and supporting our families to get the application company. Now, I literally could probably sit here for another hour, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to read all of this to you. I know that you all will get a copy of this presentation afterwards. And some of this, we've already talked about, but the few that are in the highlight, I do want to touch on while we're here. So Empowerment Behavioral Health through, we applied for a grant, an ESER grant. Is that correct, Mr. Boyer? ESER? No?
Part of it's being paid.
Part of it's from the ESER grant, part of it's from another grant. And we have a full-time employee from Empowerment Behavioral Health who is here. She is currently very, very focused on student attendance. We are collecting lots of data. I hope by next school year and then really the following school year, we will be able to tell you how impactful her work has been. She is working directly with students who are struggling with attendance. She is working directly with families, especially in our elementary building. And we are trying to provide, you know, therapeutic support of our families to get their kids into school before going the route of truancy. So we are developing individual plans for them that are very supportive and therapeutic in nature as opposed to just presenting the consequences of not coming to school. We are tag-teaming that a little bit. We're not laying off the fact that there are consequences, but we're trying to really be a support for families. And then that next one that's highlighted is the Penn State Pro Wellness Grant. I'm not going to go into this, but if you recall, last time I talked about this, the grant was denied. We got a call in January that one of the two grants got approved, so we jumped right on board. And one of my later slides, I'm going to tell you the details of that, because that's also pretty exciting. And then some additional highlights. At our West Reading building, we've done something really phenomenal from, that's been working well at the Hills, but it worked in a different way at West Reading. So the SRSS screener, which, I have in my notes what that is, because I never remember, Student Risk Screening Scale. It is something that we use K-4, where our teachers fill out for every single student three times a year. And what it does is it helps us to provide brief interventions if necessary or referral to treatment if necessary, without having any direct contact immediately with the kid. And in the elementary building, typically when there's needs, we see it externally. So we see kids being naughty. And then at West Reading, that's sort of that age where that starts to look different. And some of those behaviors become very internalized. And so we expanded that this year to the West Reading, and we did fifth and sixth grade. And we're currently going through all of the kids who are found to be at risk. But as we're looking at who those students are, we're realizing they were kids that weren't on anybody's radar. So we're pretty excited about that.
And how is that, how are they screened? By filling out something or observation by someone? Did I miss that?
Yeah, no, it's an actual screening tool where a teacher is answering, I want to say it's like thirty-eight questions about a child, and then it gets scored, and they get put in green, a yellow, and a red. The red, we're dealing with immediately. The yellow, they're staying on our radar. And then the green, we're good with them for right now. But then ideally, we're going to move that to be three times a year, just like the Hills, so that we can see if there's progress with some of our interventions. Meaning if Johnny was at a red and now he's coming in at a yellow or even a green, we know what we're providing him is working.
So they're doing that for each student, three times a year, that's.
Yes. And then you'll see those, the rest that I've highlighted on here, I won't go through all of them for time's sake, but I will just tell you that those are all the things that are coming up for some of those blank sections that I talked about. So there's, there's a lot of really good work being done, and it's the planning work that takes the time, the heavy lift. I told you, our group came together. I'm just going to briefly tell you what we talked about. So we reviewed our action plan and our progress as a group. We did talk about some areas where we want to increase attention and then brainstormed some ways to add additional action steps. We discussed ideas for a community-wide engagement event, which I'm going to talk about more on my next slide. That would be spring or summer of twenty-twenty-five. Additional data that we would like to review at our next meeting. So sometimes we're in these meetings and we say, you know, oh, we have Lauren Johnson from Empowerment Health that's going really well. Well, again, where's my data to support that? So what does our attendance data look like right now for the seven through twelve building? So we did brainstorm some ideas and we're going to, again, be coming together with that PAYS data and some additional data points. And then we continue to see grant opportunities pop up. And oftentimes, they come through on January twenty-seventh and they're due February fifteenth. So our group, our task force, knowing this is a long-term goal of the district's, would be that we have kind of a running list. If something pops up, we have something ready to go that we would be able to turn around and put into play. So some of those were very minor things that we came up with. And then we've also talked about some more significant, by significant, I mean more time, more money. And then I told you, we have our next meeting coming up. So this is, this is the big exciting thing related to that grant that I talked about and then another screening option. So Penn State, we had applied for two different grants that they had running. The one was denied immediately, but they have now put their efforts into another grant, I guess, for the same program. This one was also denied, but then came out in January, we got the call that, that they got it. So what happened was Penn State reached out to the Berks County Schools who had expressed interest. I think that there were fifteen of the eighteen. It happened to be a snow day for us, which was a virtual day, which meant we were all working, which was good news for us because we got on the call. They only took in two for this first cohort, and we are one of them. It's us and Brady White Heights. So what's that going to look like? It means we are going to have our junior, senior high school staff, we're actually going to use our SAP team to complete a school mental health quality assessment. Penn State staff will then review our results and help us develop an action plan. That will be separate from the action plan that I just discussed. It will be specific to this grant money. We will receive a thousand dollars for funding of a student club. This doesn't mean we're starting a new student club. This means we'll probably use our VETOM club or our Hope Squad or something that's already established and beef it up somehow. We will have up to fifteen hundred dollars to run a community engagement event. We are thinking this will probably occur in the summer of twenty-twenty-five, and we're considering partnering with our local police forces for National Night Out. We already get a lot of our community there, and there would be training involved, and it really would all be supported by Penn State Pro Wellness Team, Berks Counseling Center, and the BCIU is also in on some of this. We will get, this actually was already in play. So part of this grant is you have to have ten percent of your staff in the junior, senior high school level trained in youth mental health first aid. We have already applied to the IU for another grant that they had applied for to have four to five of our own staff trained as trainers. So this is exciting for us because we'll have our own staff that are trained to turn around and train their peers. But then any money from this grant that would have been used for that, we're going to get to use that for either the student club or the community engagement event. So I don't think it's going to be a significant amount of money, but it's going to give us a little bit more money to use in one of those pops. And then I told you, a minimum of ten percent of our staff will need to be trained, so our own staff trained trainers will turn around and do that. And then next year, we will be looking at providing teen mental health first aid training for one of our grade levels. So that will be an entire grade level of students will be trained in teen mental health first aid. That will be paid for and provided by the Berks Counseling Center, is how we will do it the first year. And then ideally, we will train every single year with our own in-house trainers.
Enough to be done, but what is mental health first aid? Like suicide prevention?
It is, it's related to suicide prevention, and it is acknowledging signs, symptoms, and knowing how to respond. So not saying, not being uncomfortable that you might say the wrong thing. Years ago, I was trained, it's an extensive training, it's three days, and I think it's eight or nine hours a day, and it's a lot of role-playing. So the trainers come in and they actually act as though they are a person in crisis. And this is specific, obviously, to youth. So they're acting like a first grader in crisis and what that looks like, but then they're acting like a seventeen-year-old in crisis and what that could look like.
Was that done during like, like in the curriculum classroom? Or is that going to be like a training that would take place outside of the typical classroom?
Yeah, it's probably going to be three class periods is what we're going to be looking at, we think. We don't have trained people yet to know exactly what we're going to need to do, but like I said, we're looking at either ninth or tenth grade, and we're talking about a few different models of how we would. You can do it a whole group assembly, or you can do it in, you know, English class where most kids have that class. So we're looking at some different options for that. And that is it.
Thank you, Dr. Lengel. That's been a work, and got to be making a difference in your life. So thank you for, for those of you that didn't see this from me, especially Dr. Lengel jumped in on this and deep-dive, because that's such a work. So thank you.
As we transition, so thank you, Dr. Lengel. And just to the board, you remember last month, Dr. Woodard came? We did a lot on the, a couple meetings on the math action plan, strategic goal one for the board. This is kind of a strategic goal area, too. So we wanted Dr. Lengel, especially with the transition of the board, to kind of give a big, you know, kind of a large look at the initiatives. In a few minutes, I'm going to talk about strategic plan, goal number three. It's a little smaller in scope than certainly, you know, what Dr. Woodard and Dr. Lengel are leading. And then with Mr. Arns' help with always making things with graphics, we're working on a draft to try to, you know, for board members, for staff, for parents, to try to, you know, capitalize these, budget plan, what's happening with it. So a place where people can go and see progress and, you know, hit links and try to do it in a way that is, you know, pleasing graphics and user-friendly. So Mr. Arns is helping us put some together. Certainly, we will share that with the board before, you know, whatever be put out. Hopefully, in the next few weeks, be able to pull these together into a kind of a look at the strategic plan and help people see, what does it mean? Okay, what progress are we making? And kind of, you know, as the board looked at this as a, probably a two to five year, you know, depending on how we work through the goals. The board, as you know, will be working on this some more on April seventeenth. Chance to also kind of look at the progress and then make changes. So, you know, it's two years in, it's a good time to reflect on our progress, but then look at ways we can move forward. So with that, we'll transition if that's okay. This one is certainly a little more brief, but it's exciting. At least, I think it's exciting. I know Dr. Woodard, Dr. Jones, our counselors, a lot of teachers, lots of different people involved in each of these. And I, the last two years, I did the presentation, but by no means am I, you know, as involved as each of them in some of these components that you'll see. Some, I've been pretty hands-on because we've been in a lot of meetings with outside agencies and trying to align our resources. So, you know, the area here in strategic goal number three was, was when we started this probably four or five years ago and, you know, certainly intensified in the strategic plan was, you know, we, we were traditionally good at grading some things in this district and really preparing. And then we identified as a team, some areas that we could do more. And we could make sure that there was more diversification of programs to meet the needs of all of our students, to make sure that all of our students had access and opportunity for different kinds of programs that would meet their needs in junior, senior high school and help them be prepared. So there's been a lot of progress in a relatively short period of time. So again, these first two screens just gives the board, and we'll share this on our website tomorrow. You know, this is the strategic plan areas. You can see they focus on looking at schedules and, you know, we continue to look at any roadblocks that would be in the way of more of our students participating. I know a number of our board members toured at the BCTC. We'll speak about that a little bit more on an upcoming slide. You can see our partnerships and, you know, looking at dual enrollment, which was, you know, new to our district up until the last couple of years and expanding upon that. I have a slide that give a little bit more information. And then making sure that all of these programs, we have funding so that all of our students can participate, not just, you know, those that might have access to tuition or they're material to the BCTC. This goes on to the next page. Again, just this area of the board strategic plan. You see again, collaboration, looking at businesses. This is an area that's growing. We need to grow some more. We'll speak a little bit about the, on the slide coming up, the role of R.C. Gauss, who's new this year and his role. That's been a big help and we have some updates on that. Teaming up, you know, looking not to be redundant. How could we, and we're a small district, we can't do everything. So we need to work with the districts around us and the agencies around us to make sure we can provide things here just like a larger school district. Continuing looking at data and trying to move forward strategically. Reporting, and I did a similar report that we pulled together as a team probably about this time last year. So we did a kind of a large report in the spring and wanted to do another one this year. And then again, that kind of served as the action plan where we targeted, again, not as large of an action plan as what Dr. Lengel is working through, but we strategically targeted a few areas that we knew we wanted to grow and needed to put the resources in place to help us grow. So into the next slide, I'm going to talk more about each of these on a slide, but just wanted to give you a snapshot of some numbers. So you can see you have the, on the left side, the last year's numbers. And then on the right side, you have this year's numbers. And you kind of see some really good growth. So first, with advanced placement, we consider that. Certainly, you leave advanced placement possibly with a credential. Not only you've, you know, shown that you can complete a college-level course. Many of our students then, you know, test and earn credits that they can take with them depending on their college or university. But we're up this year. We have a little bit of growth in that students that took, you know, one or more. Certainly, we know, you know, many students take two or three or even more. Again, I've said this enough times, but I think the word's going to hear me say it all through next year because knock on wood, our BCTC numbers look like they're positioned to grow again next year. We had a large application class this year and a large acceptance class. Now, students still get to choose if they want to go or not want to go. So I don't have next year's final numbers, but you can see we went from sixty-one to seventy-four. And our senior class is our smallest group. The class coming in is, is larger. So it looks like we're poised to grow again. Diversified occupations, we'll, we'll speak about a little bit on an upcoming slide. That number stayed about the same. But the nice part is now we'll show a little bit further. We've taken that program in-house. We were paying for it last year at the IU. We now have that in-house, which gives us more control for growth moving forward. Internships, we kind of predicted this would happen with the addition of R.C. Gauss. We, you know, somebody in-house to pull it all together. We had a lot of staff members trying to do this around their jobs. And then we had Dr. Listky for a couple of years. We had Mr. Beck, our counselors. Now we have a go-to person. And so if you've been through the junior, senior high school, you'll see, you know, bulletin boards that are featuring internships. You'll see on the back of his door, right where the kids go by every day. If you looked at Facebook today, we're featuring our interns. So we're able to do a lot more. Students know who to go to if they want to talk about it, not just their counselor. They can go talk to Mr. Gauss. And I think during this year, I believe Dr. Woodard, he increased students during the year. We hadn't originally signed up for it. But, you know, he wasn't here last year and they, you know, picked their courses. So he was meeting students new. We have a larger-than-ever class group request for next year. And then Mr. Gauss will continue to go around and recruit students that he might think might, would be a match for an internship. So these numbers look like they're poised to grow. Our OTC is with Wilson. You can see our numbers stay the same. IDP work placement, I believe those numbers are the same. I didn't put that back in a bit, but Dr. Lengel shares those numbers with me. Those are students with more significant disability, disabilities that are getting very hands-on, support through OBR, job placement. And we usually have somewhere between, you know, two to five a year of students getting that intensive work placement. Early enrollment, we had a few more last year. Early enrollment is when students are actually taking the course either on campus, let's say at RAP or ALRIGHT, or virtually, online. But it's not our course taught by our teachers. We had a few more last year, but we had two this year. Medical health professionals, that's BCTC in conjunction with Berks Campus. It's a credit-bearing course. We usually have about two a year. We did have one accepted this year, but the student declined and chose other things. But we do know that we have two accepted for next year. So we'll see if they choose the program. And then dual enrollment, I have a slide coming up. Certainly, you heard Dr. Woodard speak at length about it. This is our really first year with on-campus dual enrollment. A little bit of a growing year. So you can see we have zero the year before. We have fourteen students who can, you know, pursue college credits if they, if they wish to through the dual enrollment program. And gives them another option in their families as they go to take their high school work on with them in college. So more to follow, I have a slide on that. Again, very proud that you can see a breakdown here of where our students are increasing and what choices they're taking at the BCTC. Again, our board members have been out. I can't say enough about the administration there and all they've tried to do to connect. I have a slide that shows all that we do to connect the two organizations. But if you're not sure what services is, that one grabs cosmetology, culinary arts, early childhood education, protective occupations, and service occupation. So that's a common.
I think the last meeting, they talked about, there was nine hundred and eighty-five applications. For this year is the biggest in history that they've ever had. Usually, they have four to seven hundred applications. And this past year was nine eighty-five.
Yeah. And we're a little concerned among the super attending group, and I know the principals and assistant superiors and special education directors, they're getting more competitive because there's a limited, you know, space in some of those programs. So we hopefully can work as a county to continue to provide as many kids. You know, we feel, we want every student who applies to be able to go. But you can see with those numbers, they have to be very selective.
I think electrical was number one.
Yeah. If you by any chance didn't make that tour and you want a tour either west or east or something, you know, and we'll, we'll set up one individually. Or in six months or so, we'll do another one for the board and anybody who's interested. So on to just a couple other. This is interesting and, you know, we tracked these numbers last year, they're very similar. About seventy-nine percent of our senior class participated in one or more of those programs on the previous page. And, you know, aside with Dr. Jones and then through the counselors, you know, we'd love, love it to be a hundred percent. But when you look at what the other twenty-one percent of students doing, many of them are doing really great things. They just didn't choose one of these programs, but they're very integrated. You know, for example, we have a new student this year who got heavily involved with art and honors art, won some awards, I think at the county level, and is looking to pursue. He just didn't match to something we were doing. We also have six or seven kids that are new to us this year. So there are some challenges that we face if we don't have a child for four years. It is hard to kind of get, you know, sometimes they're credit deficient. So you have to kind of prioritize certain courses that take. So I think we'll continue to grow. But you can see the majority of our students are in one or more of these kind of credential-bearing programs. And just a couple next steps before we hit some of the advanced. We want to continue to make sure our students talk to each other. And, you know, if a student has an internship, word of mouth from one student to the next is the most powerful tool because that tenth grader is going to listen to that eleventh or twelfth grader more than me or, you know, anyone else in the school system. So we want to continue to have our students talk. Visibility and making sure we're getting things out, social media in the school and promoting these, these really outstanding programs. And then all the time bringing in the representatives. You heard Dr. Lengel speak about it with mental health. It's really the same thing. Sometimes they come in and speak directly to the students or the parents. Sometimes they have tables set up strategically at different events to make sure that we're connecting our students directly to some of these outside organizations. We did this this year. We don't have a particularly, you know, we're not asking the board for more staffing or change, but for the new board members, we did ask for a transfer and we took a position. We had a teacher retiring. Numbers were down in that area and we repositioned R.C. Gauss kind of into the internship and diversified occupation. So strategically, we are always looking at where can we, you know, best use our staff? Where can they be most efficient to help? And then you heard us talk enough about schedules, there'll be more to come. But this is one of those areas that is challenging. Doesn't mean we have to change the schedule because of this, but it is challenging in a forty-one-minute bell schedule to give kids sometimes things that take two or three periods because those same great students need other great things that we're offering only a limited amount of times per day. So kind of being small and forty-one minutes is what I think is challenging about it because a big school would offer that course six or seven times. Me may only offer it once or twice. So it's, we're doing a lot and we'll continue to do it. Whether or not the schedule changes is, we're going to keep plowing ahead to increase our students. So this is just a snapshot. And I think when we were on the tour, we spoke about it. We give our students, all students, an opportunity to visit and learn. Whether or not you have stated interest in it, everybody gets on site in eighth grade. And you can see that it continues with students and parents. We had the ninth grade, we have open houses. Our ninth grade students then who have expressed an interest, go back and get a second visit. I believe Dr. Woodard read before around the time they're, they're applying, which is in late fall of ninth grade, they apply for tenth grade. So it's not quite twenty-five percent, but almost a quarter of our kids are, are now applying. So this is, you know, really getting out there and a lot of students are considering their options at the BCTC. So we're, we're glad to see that kind of growth. So in the comprehensive plan, which is a little different than the strategic plan, we did put in a kind of a measurable number that we wanted to increase twenty-five percent between twenty-two and twenty-five. So we're kind of on target for that. I believe we've achieved it already. We, we used to have about twenty to twenty-five students doing internships. You know, we've kind of grown significantly. We expect growth next year. So the board could choose whether or not this needs to stay in the strategic plan. It'll be a goal of ours ongoing. So we'll continue to do this work. But having R.C. Gauss here is, I think, really the, having a dedicated staff member to push us, you know, to those numbers.
And I should know this, he's full-time?
He's full-time.
I mean, I know he's a full-time.
Yeah.
He's full-time at the internship position.
Full-time internship plus diversified occupations, which is related. But one of the things he gets to do then is he gets to go off-site. Whether off-site is the hills, because sometimes it's, it's our own programs, or off-site is the local business. He gets to go out regularly and see the students, speak with the employer or the, you know, intern coordinator and kind of get that direct feedback. So it is, we didn't have that as much. Dr. Listky tried, but he was teaching, I believe, engineering and a number of other courses. So the nice part is as Mr. Gauss learns more about our community and learns about all the great resources we have among our parents and, and businesses, that he'll be able to expand these learning opportunities off-site. So his charge this year is kind of learning and growing. And, you know, sometimes that means he's picking up the phone and calling someone or through a referral from another parent. He's going to visit with someone and say, you know, would you have some interns here next year? You know, this is a great business, a great learning opportunity. So having them networking and any board members, if you have thoughts and ideas, feel free to pass them on to Mr. Gauss. I know many of you have connections around the community. So I know, you know, career day is a great day to kind of leverage a lot of those relationships. But if you could think of anything, we're always looking for more opportunities. And if you move to the next one, this is just his flyer. You can see some great students there. Mr. Shippers might recognize one of them. We have Alea Contreras up top. She's doing a great internship here on site, you know, with athletic training. So there's a lot of opportunity after school in need. And then you see Aiden Shippers. I believe Aiden, and Mr. Shippers could say it better, but it's a continuation, an opportunity that a student had last year over at Harvest Moon and kind of taking it to the next level, looking at expanding. And I think if I understand, he's talking about some businesses that he's starting. And so I look forward to hearing more. But you can see there's an opportunity for a student where one student had an internship, we're able to get another student in to kind of move it forward and take it. And our hope is that as Aiden moves on, we have another student, you know, take over next year. And then another frequent board.
I was about that program, by the way, as they are using microponics to, to grow those vegetables that they then donate to Helping Harvest. And then kind of comes full circle with that Helping Harvest partnership and program. So it's a nice ecosystem.
Yeah, it's great. And we, you know, maybe this spring, we can get a few of the students, I believe, at the end of the school year. We had a few students come last year. So we'd love to get a few of them, maybe highlight, you know, a few of the things they learned. Incredible opportunities. And then another frequent board visitor over the years is Reenie Harris. She's over at Brayden Hospital through Tyler Health with an internship there. So I think she was here maybe a year or two ago speaking about, you know, I'm going to forget. I think she was asking us to do something, I think it was wrestling at that point. And she had already convinced pretty early that we needed to do that. So, but some, some great ones there and we can certainly share that flyer. So just again, with diversified occupations, a little bit different than an internship. This is paid work. This is for students that have identified employment as their primary goal when they leave. So again, they may do college, they may take courses, they may do other things. They may, you know, go to the military some, some point. But they really identify, you know, we, we want to get to employment. And then it's, it's looking at their skill set and saying, how can we build a skill set to make them a better employee while they're here? And there's a range of, of skills. We have students who have been employed for a year or two that come to us and say, I already have an employer. I want to get in the program. I want to earn credits by becoming a better employee. And we have students that have no work experience whatsoever. And we're really at the ground level, trying everything we can to successfully place them and keep them in employment. And as we all know, when we started employment, when we were sixteen, you learn a lot through employment. You do some things right, you do some things wrong. Some of us maybe have parents that were reinforcing those lessons at home. You know, other students, you know, have to learn some of those things. And it's labor-intensive. We have a lot of success and we have some failure. And we have kids that we have to replace and work again and find out what, what didn't work. You know, if you don't show up for your shift or you're late or you can't get along with the person next to you, what can we do to learn from that? They meet weekly, also in a class by having Mr. Gauss here on site. So they need in a classroom to kind of work on the skills that, that they're building on to, in diversified occupations. So the end goal is, you know, we certainly want to have career-based employment with employers that can take our students and, you know, continue to help them grow. But we, we do have a range here. And just to, you know, kind of emphasize that, I know Dr. Jones, Dr. Woodard and I worked on, you know, getting students boots and helping them get to, for a physical that an employer needs. And, you know, these are things that maybe we all take for granted around this table at times. And I did, wouldn't mind, kids were starting employment. But there's a lot that needs to be done to help some of our students learn and be better employees. So we're going to, we're really committed to this. And you can see if we stayed at the IU, it cost us twenty-seven grand. By having Mr. Gauss here, we can kind of absorb that into the position. And if, if that number doubles, you know, you could double the number that in a sense would almost pay for itself as we continue to get more kids in that program, so.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
I think I recall you talking about the introduction of the entrepreneurship program or at least an entrepreneurial course, kind of a curriculum discussion. Did I hear that right?
Sure, I'll defer to Dr. Woodard if I missed that one, but.
That's kind of more of a big face too. As we, we were looking to see what Mr. Gauss's schedule is going to be, how much time he needs to support the diversified occupations as well as the interns. And then one thing we really don't have is a vibrant business curriculum here. And yet we have a lot of students indicating interest in majoring in economics or finance and such. So that would be something, the certification is there, so that is the option. It's just whether, you know, we can fit it into the schedule and enough students would be interested in and take. be interested in taking the course. So it's kind of phase two of getting him situated here.
We would like to rebuild, because we don't offer currently business courses per se. He is certified, so that's something we can kind of build on.
Is it possible to attend BCTC and still have the academic profile you need to apply to college?
Oh, yeah. In fact, I believe, I don't know the percentage, but I went to their, did a pretty cool award ceremony last spring, which is a little different. They, I think it was Moving On Day, so they highlighted students that were going to college or a training center, they highlighted students that were going to the military, and highlighted students that were going to work. And I think actually the largest group were going on to college and/or post-secondary training. So really, I think, maybe when I was in school, that was the exception, and now it's actually become pretty regular, almost the norm, that so many of the students need additional training when they want, given of how technical some of the programs are. So it's a mix, but I really liked that they highlighted all three, and that's something we're going to try to continue to grow, you know, with here that we're equally highlighting the different paths that our students are taking.
There's actually a question at the last VCTC meeting that I covered Jacqueline for, so they said about, they said it was something like between 85 and 90% of students went on to take goals that were in their course of study at BCTC, and the remaining kind of 15% were moving on to university-level courses to continue that same path. So it sounds like it's helping them identify what niche they want to be in post our education.
And we are working on the details of transportation, so, you know, one of the limits of internships in diversified occupations has been some students are able to drive and some aren't, we're kind of working on that. Here's some success stories, maybe I can bring these students or some others, but Emily, you can see, also meets one of my last grades coming up, another objective we've had is to encourage careers in education, and certainly Emily's been doing a great job there, you know, down working in our schools, you can see the students smiling there, but working with our music program as well, so. Kalani is, is doing a great job, and I think Dr. Woodard was just in a meeting with her and maybe some other students, came to us this year, new, identified employment as a goal. So Kalani's been in the diversified occupations program, doing a great job, you see at a movie theater, they've been able to move her around. Actually, I think they looked to ways to promote her or provide her, if she's interested in more days, they wanted her seven days a week, I think legally you can only work six in this program, but she's really a success story in the program as somebody that's developing her skills. And, you know, where, where she takes that next year, she may continue to work there for a while, you know, may continue to grow, but it's really providing a, you know, a great resume builder as a consistent employment opportunity. And poor Isaac, he's probably going to kill me, he's sweating over there, you can see he's working all the time, you can barely keep up. I had to change this after I wrote, you know, we put the presentation together and then somebody said, no, Isaac's already doing the next thing, he's hard to keep up with. But he's done everything, he's done an internship, you can see, but now he's in paid employment with East Penn, he's over at the BCTC, he's doing internships. I think he's somebody who's been able to really pull multiple programs together, he's sacrificed a lot of other things that he loves to do to really make sure he's in position. I believe those who toured over at the BCTC saw those med ed poles in the back, now they're only like five feet off the ground or not, but I believe he was able to kind of work through those, and I believe that's kind of an area of, I think he just presented to Dr. Jones, he needs to pick up his CBL license, so he's going to work on that, and he's really, you know, fantastic young man. I saw his dad and said, at some point I gotta get him up here in front of the board, but he's always so busy, he's hard to nail down. But you can see these kids are really finding, you know, hands-on opportunities to learn and grow and get better and really develop where they want to be, so just wanted to highlight a few of our students. And then last but not least, we see our dual enrollment. You've heard Dr. Woodard talk about it, so I won't get into it a lot, but we started this year with seven courses primarily in the AP area. The students could take it for AP, could take it for dual enrollment, could take it for both. Next year though, the exciting part, Dr. Jones and Dr. Woodard have added courses, five additional courses, and several of those are not in AP courses. So we're going to get to kind of see, I think, the program grow with students that might be interested in taking different kinds of courses and, you know, want a speech, I think we all had to take speech class, if we went to college, some of us liked it, some of us didn't. So, you know, some of our students could take that course next year right here. Psychology, again, a course that a lot of students take, you know, college should transfer pretty well, so more to follow. And we do have funding through the McCullough Fund and also through a grant that Mr. Boyer helps us obtain that we, if you're free reduced lunch, we can cover all of your costs. Now, parents do pay 99 or 79 credit, I believe, right now for three credits, which is still a bargain, if you paid for college, you know that that's a lot less than you're paying, but if you can't afford that, we have students that can go for free, and we'll cover that cost, so to make sure all of our students are covered. And then we want to continue, we know a few students each year want to get off campus, want to try a course, we, you know, just recently sat down with Cootstown, so there might be more to follow with what the program Cootstown has, so. And then increasing student-staff parent knowledge, that's challenging here, AP is very well-known and it's, I think a lot of, you know, families and students, and so it's just kind of getting some new language out there, getting people to learn, there's no guarantees in anything with dual enrollment or AP, students may or may not get credits and kind of just being realistic and sitting down with parents and helping them learn and decide. So the counselors have done a great job, I've sat in on a few of their presentations with students and parents, really doing a great job in trying to get some new things out in front of our community. We have our first year four student next year, so that means that she was there freshman year, sophomore year, this is junior year, she'll be at our TCC next year as a senior, I believe that's our first four-year student, so we have students all over that continuum. You can see we added a course this year, which was partly responsible for upping those numbers in AP. So some exciting components there. If you move on, this is happening right now, we're in the heart of this, students and parents are working through their selections, and now, you know, want the Dr. Jones's team to try to figure out how can we get as many of these things as we can. Unfortunately, sometimes there's some given tape, students have to choose amongst all the things they want, but we're working through that now. And if you go to the next one, I just have one other small update, that we're in a teacher shortage across Pennsylvania and really across the United States. Spent a lot of time on this goal myself, and I know other team members have. So we're trying to do things locally here as a district, also as a county, and also working with the state to try to figure out, how can we ensure that we have great teachers, not only now, but in five years and 10 years and 15 years? So we are developing some things here on a small level, and I'll share then how we're trying to link. We have 17, so again, about a third of those interns are really around education. So, you know, again, we want to grow some additional opportunities, but these really take three shapes, they're like Emily, you saw Emily goes down to the elementary every day, and Katie Hope last year, everybody remembers Katie, talked about it. We have other students that work with a teacher here, they might be super interested in chemistry or biology, so they set up labs, they tutor. They may or may not have said they want to be a teacher, but they know they love a subject, and it might be a way to give them an opportunity to see what a teacher does, you know, and see where the future kind of goes for them as they go into college and decide what they want to do. And then really another backdoor way is we have some students here that identify with their coaches, so they love sports, they've identified with a coach, they want to learn from that coach. And again, I look at it as, we look at it as, you know, we don't know where these students will be in a few years, but if you want to coach, there's only so many places that you can coach. One of them is being a high school teacher or a college employee, so some students may come back to education at some point because they, they've identified with a coach and want to do more. We do have ED 110, we offer that through Alvernia, we're hopeful to see if students took it, you know, into next year. And we're going to reassess if we're going to use that program with Cootstown. Cootstown's running a really good on-campus program in the mornings, and they're about a half an hour away, so it's going to be challenging, but we are meeting as a kind of a county group, trying to figure out that if you have a particular student who wants to do it, you kind of like going to BCTC. They would go in the morning, come back here at the same time as the BCTC kids, they get six credits in the fall, six credits in the spring, they leave with a semester full of credits, you know, on campus with professors that, you know, are teaching educators all the time, so. More to follow if we'll stay with Alvernia or look at the Cootstown program or both moving forward. And really backdoor way of kind of looking at education is we have nine students in a new course this year. It's called coaching and officiating. Several of them have already gotten their PIWA certification, so they could go out and ref and earn money in rec leagues or youth leagues, whether in college or, you know, here if they're, if they're local. But again, I look at, if you have young people that are really interested in sports, they're really interested in their coaches, some of these folks might come back at some point and say, you know, I didn't think about this a lot when I was 18, but now that I'm, you know, 20 or 21, I'd really like to, you know, think about learning more about coaching and teaching. So I kind of lump it into this, although it's officially an officiating and coaching course. One young man told me he's going to work this spring at, what's the place down in Lancaster, the big, you know, he can get $40 a game if he does six games in a row, it's $240 in basketball, so it's a nice little part-time job if you want to do it, you put up with a few people yelling at you along the way. And just some other things, I came back from a visit, Dr. Hackman is pretty good about me whining, but we came back from a visit to the state, we spent two days in the Capitol, and really I didn't come back with one tangible thing that I could understand that anybody was doing to help the teacher Christ. So came back and complained to everybody who listened, and then Dr. Hackman and I sit down with some others, we have a countywide group now, and we're really focusing on, you know, why am I missing the area, it's a small district, we can only do so much, we can only impact a handful of kids. So we're now sharing all of our resources as a county, trying to make this easier for all of us to, you know, help young people or our professionals learn, learn what's out there, how do you access a program to become a teacher? How can we help you financially? What resources are there, what grants are there? So instead of everyone on their own trying to figure this out, is having a comprehensive source, we're going to be doing some marketing, if our board agrees, every district will kick in a little bit of funds, and you can see billboards and social media, kind of helping people understand there's great careers in education and where can go to access more information, so positive messaging. And then, you know, here's an example, I know the folks at Exeter because my kids went there, they have two math student teachers right now, and they have no openings in math. And, you know, we have a math building, so Dr. Jones and Dr. Woodard are networking with them, and we want to do that better as a county, so if you come and student teach in Berks County, that someone in Berks County is going to offer you a job. We don't want to lose you to a surrounding county because, you know, maybe we didn't know that, you know, we have student teachers at Exeter. So having a database from the colleges and the student teachers throughout Berks that we can all as a group work better to keep as many of these talented young people in Berks County serving our kids. I believe that's it for me, and if there's any questions.
I do, I have a question, you have a speaker on internship, you want a breakdown from BCIU, but what was the breakdown? I didn't hear the number, you said how many were in the teaching for the internships?
So 17 are in what I call teaching, coaching, or a subject area that they love with a teacher. So out of the, if you go back, I believe there's about, you know, 40 or 45, it's about a third of our current internships or a little more are kind of education-based.
And what were the rest of the internships then, roughly?
I, about 25 or 30, I mean, how many?
No, no, like what professions are they looking into?
It really runs the gamut.
Do you want to break down at BCIU as to what all the kids are going into?
We could provide that for the board.
Okay.
You know, like the three that are in the, you know, in the flyer, you know, three very different areas that they're in. So most of the others might be just, you know, one or two that are in an area, but I can certainly make a list. I know RC keeps a database that he shares with us, and I gladly share it so you can see, and if you have more ideas of places that would take an intern, good locations, please help us add on, but yeah, I'll put that list in, sure.
Do most other districts have these diversified occupation programs and?
Yes, so internships, I think we're, I don't want to say we were the last, but, you know, have been around for some time, we started here in 2019. So we're, you know, we're growing now, some districts maybe grew three, four, five years ago. Diversified occupations is a little different, over the last 30 years, it's been called co-op, school-to-work, it's taken on a lot of different forms and certifications in the state, so I think all districts have kind of come and gone with that. We're though one of the stronger ones about, I think, taking it in-house, having kind of staff dedicated to it, so I think our numbers are pretty healthy in diversified occupations. Dual enrollment has been around probably 10 or 15 years, so it's a little newer for us, but certainly something that's been out there for a little while. So it's, it's exciting though to see the programs kind of grow here and more students and parents get involved.
Are any of those internships remote? Do you know, and that's kind of a strange question.
No, no, that's a good question, now, and the way we work, and I don't know, I'm not aware of any, but I could check. And maybe there's portions of their job that, you know, their internship that they do, but that's a great question because so many employees now are working either part or full.
And the reason I ask is because most of, I mean, 80% of our career has been remote, and it involves her being in office full-time. And developing the skill set to have the discipline to complete your work without someone standing over your shoulder is really important for our kids.
And you look at schedules and transportation, it actually makes things easier, if we could develop some of those as well, a student could go to the library and, you know, have a 41-minute internship where maybe they couldn't get offsite, so maybe it could be something we could learn to, you know, work to grow in as well.
Yeah, I think there's a good opportunity if we reach out to parents that may work remotely, and that looks there, and maybe it could shadow someone or assist with, you know, smaller things here and there to build up, A, that muscle, and then B, our internship, beef up our internship programs. I think that would open a lot of opportunities for the business realm, which we were talking about, we think, a little bit too, so it'd be a good proposition to have.
Yeah, I'll do, we'll follow up. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Sepp. Anybody else have anything for the good of order? Then if I could have a motion to adjourn.
Send them.
A second? Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, may.
Very brief example.
Yeah, hang on for a brief second.
We'll be quick, I know it's bad.